Okay, I guess I got elected spokesman tonight for this. So we'll call the, we will call the meeting together, the Waterworks Board and Sanitary District together tonight to take up a special issue only. We're going to have presentation of quotes for US 41 Water and Sanitary meeting conflicts due to the work being done on Highway 41. We're going to consider two, a quote from only one bidder, sanitary and for Waterworks. The sanitary issue is US 41, 150 feet of lineal sanitary force main temporary abandonment, removal and replacement as a declaration of emergency. And the other reason for the meeting is US 41, 150 feet sanitary force main temporary abandonment, removal and replacement. Just to get it straight while we're in meeting tonight. We need a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Let's take a little please for both boards.
Nick Fertek, present. Bill Menasopolis, present. Ken Gambala, present. Kim Krul, present. Richard Settlick, here. Patricia Sims-Sumercheck, present. Robert Kometz, present. Wayne Pandinos, present. Joe Wizwati, present.
All right, we have a number of documents here, appendix A, appendix B, memorandums and engineering breakdown, construction cost estimates. I think we'll just turn the whole thing over to Talon Engineer right now and explain why, how and how much.
Good evening, Scott Cooked with Haas and Associates. In terms of the agenda, do you want me to just give an overview or do you want to proceed? So as you know, we met 10 days ago, something like this, to release this for bid for the relocation of 150 feet of sanitary force main, 150 feet of water main, both 12-inch pipes over the St. John ditch box culvert crossing US 41. It's right in front of the target entrance drive. We, per the emergency declarations from that meeting, submitted it to bidding, which waived the minimum advertisement period and allowed us to directly, for lack of better term, market it to two firms. Those were Grimmer Construction and Goff, Goff being the existing state subcontractor doing utility work, the box culvert replacement work for the state contractor Milestone. They've previously done work for the town of St. John and then also Grimmer Construction, who previous to that meeting indicated interest and willingness to participate in that bid. Also a seasoned contractor for the town for underground work. So how it shook out is Grimmer Construction ended up not putting a bid in for this citing a lack of available labor, you know, upon further review when they looked at the project specifications. And I think, as I've discovered in contacting numerous contractors, these are very fluid times for these small jobs. What it essentially comes down to is these small, small jobs are very problematic for contractors right now because they are, there are so many projects and they're such scale that all their crews are tied up. So what happens is a crew will shake loose on a Thursday that they didn't expect and they'll look for work for them for the next week. But if you called them on Wednesday prior to that crew shaking up, they would have said I'm not available for three months. So it's been a dance with these. I believe, I'm projecting little but, or speculating a little, that that's what happened with Grimmer in this case. Regardless, they did not put a bid in. They notified us several days in advance of the bidding deadline. Goff did, so you should all have their bid. They submitted a bid of $363,422. This is substantially more than our opinion of probable cost, which we thought was mildly conservative at something like $190,000. I don't have it right in front of you. It was just under $200,000.
$193,620.
Yeah. So our costs were somewhat inflated for that. That said, it's very difficult to price, particularly mobilization costs for small jobs. Due to it being a small job, they can't offset as much of those costs over larger quantities of materials. So we expected some range in that. We certainly didn't expect double. In addition to it being conservative, this is no fault of Goff's, so I don't, I want to be clear, there's, we had hoped, let me just say, we had very much hoped that their mobilization costs would be significantly reduced due to the fact that they are, will already be mobilized on site to replace the box culvert for the state at this site. So that being said, with only receiving one bid, we really can't compare that to other contractors to see if that played out. It was still, it was significantly higher than our estimate for that, but as I said, that's not totally surprising, given it's such a small job. However, I did provide that kind of breakdown of all the other items. There are some significantly different costs than expected than, and when I say expected, I mean based on historical numbers for these same units. Those top line numbers, the mobilization costs in particular, they can vary a lot again based on the scale of the project. But that's where they're supposed to vary, the actual unit costs of the pipe and the various other things should be within a reasonable range and some of those were quite a bit out of range. So that said, that's, it's kind of the best we can do. It's a unique project based on the drainage of the force main and things like that that are, there's so little pipe, to be honest, that those other costs end up making a big part of it. So that's sort of the best we can do, based on our historical knowledge of other similar projects. Again, we're really handicapped by only having one, one bid come in. I'm happy to explain the project some more again for recap if you like, but I, you know, nothing's really changed since the last time we got together. So essentially, the decision before you tonight is do we accept this cost from Goff for this work and contract, award it and then they could proceed to work presumably as soon as possible. We had hoped Goff would be awarded the job because they're also the sub for doing the actual box culvert. So there could be theoretically, though I still wouldn't put it past, but theoretically there shouldn't be a conflict between contractors because they're the same contractor at the same site. That said, it's significantly higher than our estimate. So I did just distribute this revised appendix B. It's just an update of the information I provided to you all during the week in anticipation of this situation where we're looking for additional bids possibly if we decide to reject the Goff bid and rebid it, would be to see if contractors were truly available. So we obviously just went through this with contract one for the Waterboard. We only received one bid from Dyer Construction for that job. That was a very large job, multiple sites, good work. So just to, it's not necessarily just a small work either, it's a large work. We only received one quote for that, or I'm sorry, one bid and the Waterboard ended up tabling that project to rebid it in the fall, hoping to get better prices. That came in also significantly higher than expected as part of the Waterbond work. So I digress. So we contacted 13 firms in addition to the three firms that we'd previously contracted. So that's a total of 16 different Northwest Indiana underground plumbing contractors. To say the least, this is quite unusual to have to literally call 16 different contractors to see about the availability. As it shakes out, there's a potential of two or three that do have a strong interest in bidding it and appear to be available within the next month to achieve the first phase of the project, which is the removal, essentially the demolition half of the project. To recap, after the town removes its facilities, the state will come in and put the box culvert in and then the town will come back and put the facilities back in. It's phase two.
What was the timeline for the state to put the new culvert in?
Three weeks. That was, that's from start of construction to, I believe they actually said two without any delays, so I think we added the third week for our planning purposes. So three weeks from, from breaking ground to completing it. But there was a mobilization time that was discussed, I believe it was three weeks for the culvert, something like that to be-
I want to say it was like two or three.
Two, three weeks to actually get the culvert on site. So I don't know exactly if that overlaps with that period or not, from the state's perspective.
I think basically what they said is you give us the go on this and we'll, we'll get it mobilized now.
Yeah.
So if we get pricing back that's sane, then I think we can give them the go ahead and get that started.
Yeah.
Who are the other companies that, that expressed some interest in it within the next three weeks?
So those are the three at the bottom. It's Woodruff and Sons, B&amp;D Sewer, and then ironically, Grimmer today notified me that they have a crew that just became available.
Awesome.
Just, I mean, I won't name firms, but there were firms I contacted on Friday with interest that today are not interested. There were firms on Wednesday I contracted that weren't interested and on Thursday were. I mean, this literally is like changing by the hour at some point. So I do want to caution, we stated in the memo, there is a risk to rebidding any project that you will receive higher bids or no bids. So you do have sort of an offer on the table. These are crazy times. These are unusual.
So Scott, what's your recommendation with respect to the current bids that are pending before the two boards tonight?
Uh, so-
It's our course of action beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sort of, I don't know what to advise. I mean, it's really the, this is sort of the executive decision time from the executive board. What I would say is it's extremely high, it's an extremely high bid. We have serious interest from two or three serious contractors that do a lot of this It's not, it's not a-
I have one question.
Mm-hmm.
The engineer's opinion of probable cost, you know, is what it is. And then we have the second one, you know, the Goff. Is, I'm taking it that the engineer's opinion is a fair and reasonable, just price. Is it the Goff, is, are we in a price gouging thing or is it supply and demand on the market? What substantiates $169,000 variance? You know, 10% or something you could see, but-
Yeah.
Is the engineer way off or is Goff way off? I mean, what are we dealing with here? Or is it, is we're blaming the market and availability and inflation and supply chain and all of the above?
There's no direct answer unfortunately.
Yeah.
I mean, the reality is our opinions of probable cost are based, generated from years of historical data, including current bids just from Dyer Construction for real contracted work for a big project in this town. Very similar relocation work. The town just south of here lowered the same sanitary force main for the NDOT ditch that never got built. We have, so we have real costs from Grimmer Construction from that. That was a year ago that that work was completed. We have price data from a year ago from the 101st, 101st Water Main relocation on the east side of US 41, 12-inch water main, same thing we're dealing with here. So the Goff numbers are substantially higher than real, like contracted prices and bid prices from competitive bidders at that time.
I mean, this is like dealing with the mafia or something. I mean, this is a lot, a lot of money.
Well, that's why I don't, all I can do is assess the numbers for Goff. I cannot assess intention and I, and I never would.
Right.
I don't know how they would justify those per unit. If it was one unit, just so you understand, when we receive bids, if there's one or two units that are way off, red flag, we call them, we say, hey, you know, are you misunderstanding? Are we missing something? We go through a little process of back and forth.
Right.
Every one of these numbers was just substantially higher.
Haas and Associates has been our engineer for many years going back in the 90s and I've always seen the reasonable estimates.
Yeah.
And in the past, the contractors usually came fairly close to that. This is, this is very unusual.
Yep.
To see that almost 50% higher on some of these items.
Yeah, so-
They don't want to work?
Again, I want to be careful not to project, but all I could say is we are extremely limited by only having one bidder. I mean, that's, so this is America, a contractor can ask to be paid for whatever they want.
And to your point, Scott.
It's America and we have competitive bidding to sort of cancel that out.
Yeah.
And with only one bid, we're, we're limited.
To that point, I mean, if you were getting any kind of work done that was substantial at your own home, you're going to want to look at least at two people to give you some kind of price comparison. I don't think it would be in the town's best interest to just say, okay, we're going to take Goff and we're going to go with that. And I don't think that's anyone's intention here tonight. So I guess the question, the bigger question is what's our alternative and, you know, where do we go?
Yeah, so the, the primary actionable alternative tonight is to go through basically the same process and we just re-bid it under the emergency authorization. I don't know if you have to reactivate that or tonight.
I think it would be, and I talked to Westland about that. He said it would probably be best to just to restate the emergency situation.
Yep, perfect. So we just start the process again. We would of course invite Goff to bid again or just resubmit their current bid, that'd be fine. And then we would invite these three contractors. I would encourage it to be worded if it's legally possible.
They should be named in the, the motion as well.
We'll name those, but if it can be not limited to those either, if we do, as I say, change about tomorrow, we might get one of these who previously said-
And that's, that's a good point, if there's any other bidders that are specified from, you know, one through 16 on here.
Yep.
Scott, I don't see LGS Plumbing on here. I think they've done some of this kind of work in Crown Point. Is there some reason why they weren't contacted?
LGS, I don't know specifically about LGS. I'll inquire though.
Okay, thank you.
I find the mobilization costs outrageous, given that that equipment's already there. I think they sensed that we're, they think we're in a desperate situation and taking advantage of it.
I, I, I expected it to be a little salty, but they threw the whole salt shaker at us and said, yeah.
Yeah, a big bag of salt.
Yeah.
The thing is, I'm sure every member here wants us to be responsible for the Talon money and we're, everybody's very unhappy about spending that much more money than's estimated. What is the gun that the state has over us right now?
So that's, last meeting, we addressed communication with NDOT. I don't know, Joe, if you've had any inroads. I have specifically asked about if the contractor for the state is charging the state delays on their contract and I never got a response from them. I don't know, Joe, if you've heard.
And I had not heard. I had spoken to Scott, the engineer on the project, explained to him the situation. He was very disappointed in Goff as well. And after I explained to him the situation that we've, you know, here was our estimate, here's what they came in at. So yeah, he was very understanding and very disappointed in the amount that was presented on this matter. So, and he said just keep them updated on stuff and that's, you know, we have our weekly, weekly calls or, you know, he reaches out to me every week. So, you know, we've been having really good communication now. I don't know what happened in the past, but we've definitely been talking.
So, you know, in terms of the gun, it's hard to establish. I know everyone's benefits from this project being completed as soon as possible. They want to get paved and that road finished by the end of this year is my understanding. So obviously, the sooner the town can move the facility, the better. I did reach out to the state to find out about delay costs or something like this to get some indication of any financial implication to this, but I haven't gotten a response.
And I haven't heard anything on that either, so.
So I don't know, I don't know that it has to be done next week versus three weeks from now versus six weeks from now. I, I, I don't know. All I know is they want to get it done.
Sooner the better.
I will tell you, the only reasonable way to get contractors will, to give them about four weeks from today to get that work completed, the demo. So we're looking into early August, mid-August at this point, so.
And then they're looking at three weeks for them to get everything teed up and done on their end and then how long to reconnect everything, test everything? How long, what time, what timeframe are we looking at for that?
So that'd be a few weeks to, yeah, after that.
So we're looking at sometime in August, end of August maybe?
End of August, I would expect the box culvert to be on its way to being completed. So I don't expect the town's facilities to be back in place until September or maybe even early October would be the goal.
And then what are we talking, maybe two weeks for them to get the-
Yeah, the amount, so again, the amount of work is actually not substantial. It's the most, it's having the crews available to get there. And just for your information, so some feedback from all these, I talked to 16 contractors. So over and over, I heard the same things. One, we're on large projects, we do not have time for repair projects is what this is considered. Others have stated that they've never been busier. Apparently, the union is out of workers, there's no union, laborers descend out to these firms so they can't expand. It's a really, you know, it's, it's inflation and too much work. It's really a crazy situation. So again, I don't mean to like dodge the question about Goff's bid, but that's the like sphere it's in, operating in. But again, it doesn't mean that we won't get reasonable bids from others, we just need to get them.
That bid price, we've already got the pipe. So they got $44,550 for pipe, but that also includes a permanent backfill.
Correct.
So that bid price of 363,422 could probably be about $25,000 cheaper because we already have the pipe.
Yeah, so their bid actually, for the actual pipe item was actually quite good. And again, for that very reason, that included our opinion of probable cost assumed the contractor would be providing the pipe. So the town has actually provided that and so that was undoubtedly one of the reasons their pipe number itself per linear foot was reasonable.
We've got a meeting next week. Do we have any realistic expectation that we may have some bids?
Yeah, so we would, and I've confirmed with at least two of these contractors directly that they would be able to provide a price by Friday if they-
So we could consider those at the next meeting then, right?
Yeah, or even Monday then if that's the case, but you might want to see them Friday. Might be better.
Yeah, because our normal meeting is Tuesday, so it would be good to put this to bed.
Yeah.
My view is to go ahead and, yeah, when you said re-advertise whatever, rebid it and add more emphasis on building up competition to get the numbers down. And then especially since the state hasn't said if there's any impact due to any kind of delay. I mean, you say there's communication, but they haven't gotten back to you is whether there's any impact on them if anything is delayed. So you're operating in a dark, which if they say anything, I would relay to them. I asked, but you never told me, so how am I supposed to do anything?
But if we could save tens of thousands of dollars pushing it two or three weeks.
Right. Why not do it?
Do it for the taxpayers, yeah.
$169,000.
I think this was brought up in the past and I'm sure the state's not going to give you an answer, but this was planned. Why all of a sudden is there a conflict?
Why is there a conflict?
Why is there a conflict? How?
I mean, so the micro history of this conflict is in March, March, early, mid-March, early March is when they-
Know where our utilities were, right?
The town knows where the utilities are?
It stated.
Well, no, they didn't. They actually went out and did potholing to determine where they were because they weren't sure of what the depth was. And so that's why they went out and actually did potholing to determine what the depth was and that's when they found out it's laying right on top of the culvert.
When did they do that?
So that was in March.
April, May, March?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I didn't find out about it till when we went out there and I think it was in May.
Yeah, so mid-May is when they then came back with the data from March about the existing utilities with a declaration that it was in conflict. Then it was sometime after that that they decided it was 150-foot conflict.
How confident are you that we're going to get more than Goff's bid? If you had to personally guess?
Well, just to clarify and I want emphasis, but Goff may not bid again, you know.
Right.
So in order to go to bid, we'd have to reject Goff's current bid and then Goff may not bid, which wouldn't surprise me. Or they may bid higher or they may adjust their bid and be more competitive. I, I would not have taken the time to go through all these contractors and contact them one-on-one and personally, we have a lot of relationships with them, that we would get at least, you know, one more bid from another contractor. I would genuinely hope Goff rebids. If they have questions or there's some misunderstanding about the scope, then this would be a perfect opportunity to get a more competitive bid back in that the town would consider. So I don't really see any harm to Goff doing that. In our experience, there's sometimes pride involved in that decision, but Goff would certainly be invited and welcome to bid the project back. And we're fairly confident we're going to get at least one other, one other bidder, hopefully three besides Goff for this next bid.
And I think again, to your point, not specifying exactly who they are, just allowing those that have been, you know, approached to perform a, provide a quote on the process. So I don't, I think maybe we should make sure that the motion states that.
Yep.
Is that we're going to allow this to be an open process for those who want to quote on this because it might change from today. Yeah.
So we're not just specifying to these 16 any longer? Once we reject that bid, we're opening it up as an emergency bid for anyone to-
Quote, yeah.
Or quote on them, sorry, yeah.
Yeah. So allow anyone to quote. We've got to have minimum, it's got to be presented to at least two of them, so, by state law, so it doesn't say you can't have more.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You want to come up with the proper motion here?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I guess the first action that the, the Sanitary District Board and the Waterworks Board would have to do is motion to consider rejecting the quote from Goff. They would have to entertain motions for that. Those would be separate motions for the Sanitary District and Waterboard.
If we, if we reject it, then it's out, right? Or if we table it, then it's still in? Is that, if we reject it, you'd have to rebid.
He would have to put it back in, yeah.
Yeah, and I, not an attorney, but I do not believe you can have an open bid and then rebid the same work. So I think you either have to close it or accept it if we're going to go with other bids.
First motion now, I guess, is to reject the Goff bid.
So if they, if they rejected the Goff bid as it's submitted now, they'd have to re-quote.
If they rejected the Goff bid, it would just simply put us back to where we were a week ago or 10 days ago, which is we, we have no plan to move that pipe at that time. Joe, as you know, discussing with Public Works, I've inquired if Public Works can self-perform some of this, like the first phase, possibly shutting down that main and draining it. I mean, I know Public Works is quite busy, so I know that's one of the reasons they're generally unavailable to do these kinds of things. That could be another option potentially to explore if, if we can't get reasonable bids on this.
We've got to combine the motion, reject the Goff bid and request new bids.
The other option would be to, you know, basically defer the bid, their quote, and consider that as part of the, the next process. So if we don't get any additional bids, that's our only bid, then we can make those determinations at that time. But that's not allowing them to re-quote their pricing if they want to.
But I don't think, you can't get additional bids without rejecting Goff's bid for the-
That's what I would say is we'd have to, that would be the other option, is to reject the-
The motion is reject the Goff bid and request new bids.
The motion would be to reject the Goff bid by both sanitary and the Waterboard.
So somebody wanted to say that?
Like to make a motion to reject the bid presented to the Waterworks Board.
And rebid, and rebid.
We're not going to do that, that's coming later.
You want a separate motion?
That'll be separate, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Nick Fertek.
Present. Oh, aye, sorry.
Bill Menasopolis.
Aye.
Ken Gambala.
Aye. Yes.
And then the same motion would be before the Sanitary District Board for consideration to reject the bid by Goff.
So I'll entertain the motion to reject the bid by Goff for the Sanitary Board?
So moved.
Second.
No questions, discussion? Roll call.
Yeah. Kim Krul.
Yes.
Richard Settlick.
Yes.
Patricia Sims-Sumercheck.
Yes.
Ken Gambala.
Yes.
Ken, we abstain.
That's right, I don't, I don't understand that, okay, but I won't abstain that. Abstain.
Ken Gambala abstains. Robert Kometz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, Mr. Chairman, the next item of business would be for the Sanitary District to make a motion to declare an emergency pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-12-9. And the justifications are listed below.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion-
Okay, I'll entertain a motion per Indiana Code 36-1-12-9 to declare a emergency and the reasons per the reasons in the agenda.
Also move.
I will second.
Ken Gambala?
I have to abstain on this one.
Unfortunately, I still have to call your name. Kim Crowell?
Yes.
Richard Setlik?
Yes.
Patricia Sims-Simerchek?
Yes.
Robert Comets?
Yes.
Okay, now you let the Water Works to, to state of urgency.
So right now, it'd be before the Sanitary District, their motion to authorize the solicitation of construction quotes for the temporary abandonment, removal, replacement, 150 linear feet, 12-inch diameter sanitary force main at US 41 St. John Ditch Crossing. As time is of the essence, the quotes for the project will be sought under the emergency basis pursuant to 36-1-12-9 for a minimum of two contractors specifically named by those by the town engineer known to deal with public construction works required to be performed. Further, after review and recommendation by the engineer, town manager will be authorized to execute the agreements and documents necessary. With the exception, I would like these to be considered in this motion to be stated as such that the awarding of the, the work would be done by the Sanitary District at their regular meeting.
Got it. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize the solicitation of construction quotes for the temporary abandonment, removal, and replacement of 150 linear feet of 12-inch diameter sanitary force main sewer at the US 41 St. John Ditch Crossing. Again, time, time is of the essence. Quotes for this project will be sought under the Code 36-1-12-9 for a minimum of two contractors, specifically those named by the town engineer known to deal in public construction work required to be performed. And we will have those bids for next week for our regular meeting of the Sanitary District Board.
Yes, and for the record, those four firms minimally would be Woodruff &amp; Sons, B&amp;D Sewer, Grimmer Construction, and Goff, Inc., or any others that we come in contact with this week.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Ken Gambala?
Abstain.
Kim Crowell?
Yes.
Richard Setlik?
Yes.
Patricia Sims-Simerchek?
Yes.
Robert Comets?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, the Sanitary District, there would be a motion to authorize the Water Works Board to continue to take lead on the contract as primary board and to reimburse all costs associated to the Sanitary District.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the Water Works Board to take the project lead and be reimbursed for any costs related to the project.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ken Gambala?
Abstain.
Kim Crowell?
Yes.
Richard Setlik?
Yes.
Patricia Sims-Simerchek?
Yes.
Robert Comets?
Yes.
Okay, and the Water Board, so basically, this would be for the declaration for the emergency, the Water Board declaration that the required 12-inch water main, temporary abandonment, removal, and replacement of, or at the US 41 St. John Ditch Crossing is a public works emergency per IC 36-1-12-9. The justifying reasons are laid out below on the agenda. Motion would be in order, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to declare an emergency per Indiana Code 36-1-12-9 with the reasons that were given in the agenda.
I'll second that.
The motion is second. Roll call, please.
Nick Furtick?
Aye.
Bill Menasopolis?
Aye.
Ken Gambala?
Aye.
Thank you. So the next item, Mr. Chairman, is the invitation to quote on the emergency basis. So a motion would be needed to authorize a solicitation of construction quotes for the temporary abandonment, removal, and placement of approximately 150 linear feet of 12-inch diameter water main at US 41 at the St. John Ditch Crossing. As time is of the essence for this work, the quotes for the project will be sought under the emergency basis per Indiana Code 36-1-12-9 for a minimum of two contractors, specifically those named by the engineer known to deal in public construction works required to be performed. Further, after review and recommendation by the engineer, town manager shall be authorized to execute all agreements and documenta, documents as necessary as approved by the Water Board at their regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the solicitation and construction quotes for the temporary abandonment, removal, and replacement of 150 linear feet of 12-inch diameter water main at the US 41 St. John Ditch Crossing. As time is of the essence for this work, quotes for this project will be sought under an emergency basis per Indiana Code 36-1-12-9 from a minimum of two contractors, specifically those named by the town engineer known to deal in the public construction work required to be performed. Further, after review and recommendation by the engineer, the town manager shall be authorized to exec, to execute all agreements and documents as necessary.
As approved by the Water Board at their regular meeting.
As approved by the Water Board at the regular meeting.
And again, for the record, those construction firms would be Woodruff &amp; Sons, B&amp;D Sewer, Grimmer Construction, or Goff, Inc., in addition to any others that may contact us this week.
Before we vote on it, we're, we're going to try to contact everyone else also.
They've already been contacted. I will, I will contact every one of these and alert them again that it's out. I just don't expect them, but.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Nick Furtick?
Aye.
Bill Menasopolis?
Aye.
Ken Gambala?
Aye.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, a motion would be in order to authorize the Water Board, Water Works Board to take lead on the contract as primary board, accept reimbursement of all costs associated to the Sanitary District portion of this project.